The order at 7:05 PM. And start with the roll call, have board members introduce themselves. We'll start to my left, please.
Patty McQuinn, thank you so much for being here.
Hi Cheryl Picard, and welcome everybody.
Good evening, I'm Anubam Chiksedu, thanks for being here.
Hi, I'm Patrick Keough, thanks for coming out tonight.
I'm Judy Westra, thank you for coming tonight.
All right, Dr. Merritt, would you like to introduce yourself and your team?
Good evening and welcome, I'm Superintendent Monica Merritt. I'd like to begin by introducing my assistant, Ms. Diane Robertson. We want to thank her for being here and capturing our minutes for us every week. A new addition to the team, Carly Reyes is filling in to support us with our technical expertise here from our communications and marketing department. I'd like to ask the remaining members of core team to introduce themselves to you, beginning with Ms. Minnick.
Good evening, Jill Minnick, Chief Financial and Operations Officer.
Hi, I'm Beth Rail, Chief Academic and Innovation Officer, thanks for being here tonight, welcome.
Good evening everyone, Liz Vartanian Gibbs, Assistant Superintendent, Student and Family Engagement.
All right, and if our students can introduce themselves, please.
Hi, I'm Sayyou Khorar, and I'm a junior at Canton High School.
Hi, I'm Josh Patterson, I'm a sophomore at Plymouth High School.
All right, Mr. Patterson, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up is the adoption of agenda, approval of consent agenda, action item 240241. Is there a motion to approve? I'm sorry, a motion?
Mr. President, I move that we approve our agenda and adopt our consent agenda. This is action item 240241.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or is there any action item that any board member would like to remove from the consent agenda? All right, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no? Carry seven zero? Six? Oh, all right, sorry guys. Six zero. All right, so if we can have Dr. Merritt walk us through it.
All right, this evening, our consent agenda consists of human resources transactions, it's our last time together. We have, the HR department has been busy hiring champions, so we have new hires for your consideration and introduction this evening. Leaves, resignations, and retirements, we have tenure recommendations as well. We also have the approval of our regular meeting minutes, that's from January the 9th, 2024. We had the first reading of policy 7540.03, that's the student technology acceptable use and safety, as well as the 7540.04, that's the staff technology acceptable use and safety. We had an out-of-country field trip that was reviewed at SPA for your consideration. And finally, this evening, we had the resolution to consider Ms. Minnick to continue her service at the Mylae Board of Trustees. And that was a memo attached there for that involvement. This evening, I'm going to ask Dr. Liz Vartanian Gibbs to introduce our new hires to you.
Good evening again, it is an honor to introduce all of our new staff members and some staff members who were currently in our district, but they are in new positions. So when I call your name, if you could please stand up. Logan Kendall. Logan is going to be teaching chemistry at Canton High School. Jessica McCavitt. Jessica is going to be an occupational therapist in our school district. Tom Simmington is a school psychologist at Salem High School. Emily Vandencourt will be at Liberty Middle School, teaching social studies. Lisa Vance has moved to a new position in our district, she is now the accounting specialist in payroll. Next, we have Heather Walsh. Heather is in the registrar position, she came to us as the administrative assistant at Miller Elementary School. Huma Ahmed is our new administrative assistant in specialized services. Also this evening, I would like to share with you that our following staff members are retiring and we would like to thank them for their service in our district. Kevin Lane, the principal of Starkweather Academy. Gwendolyn Parkinson, language arts teacher at Liberty. Fred Stanley, language arts teacher at East Middle School. So congratulations to all of our new hires. If you could just come behind Ms. Rail and I, we are going to hand you a candy bar. This candy bar is to welcome you, and it is from the HR department. And also, congratulations to everybody retiring in our district.
Congratulations again. On to celebrating.
Okay, this evening, we are also going to be celebrating the tenure of some of our teachers. So a teacher would receive tenure in our school district after five successful years of teaching. And they become a probationary teacher and move from a tenure teacher.
Dr. Vartanian Gibbs, are you looking for names?
Yeah.
I'm right there for you.
This is fabulous, excellent. So these teachers right here have received tenure in our school district. And you will first see that Margaret Koell, who is a music teacher, she works in the shared time program, is receiving tenure. Congratulations, Margaret. Hannah Long, elementary teacher at Erickson Elementary School will be receiving tenure. Jillian Hoard, who is our ASD teacher at Madonna University. And Giselle Marinski is a math teacher at Plymouth, and she's also receiving tenure. Thank you. And thank you for your patience.
Thank you for stepping in for us.
That's right, thank you. All right, next up, celebrating success with trustee Keough.
This evening, the Board of Education would once again celebrate our school community with an extra mile award to one of our hardworking and outstanding staff members. First grade teacher Annie Siebel at Farron Elementary School. Annie takes an active role in our building to improve student success by leading and supporting others in the district to do the same. She's a member of the PBIS data committee, March's Reading Month co-chair, and one of the heads of the Farron Elementary Social Committee. She's come in early to help new staff set up for their rooms, assisted others with setting up sound walls and giving up her prep time to try out strategies for supporting Farron students. Annie is constantly told she is one of those people anyone would be lucky to work with. Her students adore her, and the extra miler doesn't even begin to explain what Annie does for our building. Thank you for your wonderful efforts and determination to better the lives of our students, staff, and community. At this time, I'd like to bring up Taylor Tiskowitz, speech-language pathologist at Bentley and Farron Elementary, who nominated Annie for this award, to say a few words about her. Taylor?
I don't like to speak out loud, so apologize in advance. Annie is the type of person that everyone's lucky to work with. Coming into a new building when you're a first-year teacher is really hard. So the first person that introduces you to a building is really important, and Annie was that person for me. So she's the definition of what a teacher should be, so.
Thank you, Annie.
On behalf of the Board of Education, I present Annie Siebel with the Mary Beth Carroll Extra Miler Award for consistently going the extra mile to support students and staff at Plymouth Canton Community Schools. And I would like to thank you and ask you if you'd like to say anything about this recognition.
Thanks so much, first of all, and I can't do it without the people that I work with at Farron, the students that I work with, as well, the parents that I work with, it actually is really the whole community too. So I actually consider myself really lucky for everybody that I work with. And my girls, because they always say, "Mom, why are you always at work?" Or bringing things home, so actually it takes everybody, so thanks so much, I really appreciate it. And I actually love what I do, so not very many people can say that.
And thank you to your girls.
That's right. Next up, President's Report, there is no President's Report this evening, so we're going to move on to SPA with Secretary Sedu.
Thank you, we met last week and had one of the best meetings in SPA. And that's because it was 75% student-led, in terms of student presentations. I mean, talk about, you want to get a taste of what it's like to work with students and see what they're doing in our district? Come to one of these SPA meetings, like chills. And their ability to share their experiences, their certifications, credentials, scholarships that they're earning while they're in these programs was just phenomenal, we couldn't get enough of them. So we had to push one agenda item off because we wanted to keep hearing from them. So Montine Barbie and Heather shared from the Career Technical Education Program some highlights. I'm just going to go through three of the groups that presented. Oops, sorry, I'm taking your stuff. One of the groups is the culinary pathways, as you know, we have one of the best culinary programs, so it's always great to see what these kids are doing and experiencing, and of course, going to all these competitions, and they do amazing work at these competitions. I'm not allowed to say anything about competitions, so we'll just leave it at that, we know they're going to do great. The other one is advanced educational careers. So we talk about building our own pipeline of educators, starting at PCCS. Well, we got a glimpse of that. And to see that these are the future leaders, future educators, wow. So I kept raving about them all day. The third one was computer science pathways. Again, we've got kids who are doing cybersecurity, the governor's competition, national competition. And so we got a great glimpse of what these kids are doing in and outside of the classroom. So that was the big part of SPA. The other one that we talked about, which is going to come to the board, is Other Worlds of Science Fiction Fantasy Course Materials Update. We reviewed that, and of course, the curriculum team always shares a checklist by which they review materials to make sure it's in alignment with district and state guidelines. And we discussed one out-of-country field trip. And our next meeting is, what's on the, March 6th, that's coming up, and it's at 5:00 PM here in this room, please join us.
Great job, thank you. On to Policy Committee with Member McQuinn.
Thank you. So we had a meeting last night to make up for the meeting that we missed with the weather day in January. And we have quite a few policies that are being brought forth at the next meeting because of change in state law. So if you follow the legislature, there had been multiple subjects that had been prohibited, subjects of bargaining, and now they are allowable subjects of bargaining, so our policies have to reflect adequately state law. They went into effect actually today. And then we have, I believe, 90 days to make sure that our policies have been updated. So those were a priority. And they were around like four subjects. And then Dr. Merritt's team will also have to be working on their administrative guidelines to get them in line with our new policies. And I also did want to mention that tonight, we had on there the technology policies. And one of our themes and goals as a board was for the district to be an innovator. And when Mr. Salzer had been bringing these policies forward, he checked with other districts to see what they were doing around AI and those kinds of things, and the answer was, most often, we're waiting to see what you do. So other districts are waiting to see what we're doing with those things before they move forward. So we are meeting part of our definition of being innovators. Our next meeting is February 27th, which is in two weeks from tonight, 5:30, collaboration space right down there. We are cleaning, we'll be cleaning up a few of these things that we had some questions on. Our legal counsel was checking on some things. And then we will be moving on through our student policies. Thank you.
Thank you. FNO?
Great, our last FNO meeting was last Thursday, February 8th, here in this room. At that meeting, we discussed some of the items you'll see on the agenda this evening, including the Combi Auburn purchase, which is for our cafeteria teams as part of that process, as well as an easement bid, as part of the bid package for the bandroom addition that we're doing. We had a large discussion about the tennis court replacements at the PSEP facility and some of the challenges associated with that. And we also discussed the preparation work that we're doing for the annual budget survey. It'll be going out to all the community to get your input as part of that process. Our next FNO meeting is Thursday, February 22nd, 5:00 PM here in this room, and we welcome the community.
Thank you, Student Voice in Action Committee.
So at our last meeting, which was May 20th, we had the dieticians. It was May 20th, right?
Not May.
Whenever our last meeting was. We had the PCCS dieticians come, and we had an amazing discussion with them, thank you so much. If you're listening, it was amazing, we greatly appreciate it. And then also.
We also reviewed the dress code and came up with revisions to suggest to the handbook committee. And our upcoming meeting will be on Monday, February 26th, at 6:00 PM at Canton High School.
Fantastic, thank you both. All right, on to Administrative Reports/Recommendations, first up Superintendent.
Thank you, President Wilson. Because we had the canceled meeting last week, I want to go back again, last month as, not last week, two weeks ago. Last month was School Board Recognition Month, and we wanted to make sure that we took an opportunity to celebrate our school board members for both meetings last month. So we had an opportunity to share a resolution with you from Wayne Risa, and really sing your praises. But just because we canceled a meeting, I'm not going to miss that opportunity to again amplify the work that you do on behalf of our students and our staff and our school community. So although it is February, we are going to celebrate our school board every month. I know that this is a thankless job, and it's a challenging job. Fifth-largest school district in the state of Michigan, over $200 million budget that we're managing, approving. Part of your work is to approve policies, as you've done this evening. These policies impact our students that are here in our seats today and for future years beyond. And it's incredible work, it's thoughtful work, it's checking in on the pulse of your community and making sure that you're advocating for those needs as we develop our strategic plan, as well as lending your voice and advocacy to our state legislators. And you do an amazing job making sure that we are receiving the appropriate funding so that we can continue to provide a world-class education for our students. So today and every day, I thank you for that work, and I think we're offering a little token of our appreciation. Once again, a little swag bag for you, so as you continue to go throughout the community, you'll represent PCCS well. So thank you again, please join me, and a round of applause for our school board members. We also have some nice certificates as well. Thank you. As we move through today, I just want to give a factual reminder to our school community about a very important non-homestead millage, this is an operating millage renewal. You heard that word correctly, a renewal, this is not a new ask of our community. That will be on the February the 27th ballot. Remember that this proposal, again, is not a new request for taxes, but this is asked to renew the millage that belongs to non-homestead properties. Non-homestead properties means businesses, commercial properties, second homes. When we look at 1994 and Proposal A, the state of Michigan, this is how we determine our funding. And it's the expectation through that state that we would collect these taxes as an individual school district. They can authorize and approve up to 18 mills for our, as a tax rate for our local businesses, again, commercial properties. This, as our community expires in 2024, so we are seeking for our community to come out and lend your voice on February 27th. When you look at this millage, the reason it is so vital to PCCS, it equates to about $33 million, that's 16% of our general fund budget. People may ask, what is this support in PCCS? Recognizing that 85% of our budget is based on staffing, our amazing teachers that we talk about every opportunity that we get, our incredible support staff, our school nurses, our counselors, our school resource officers, our programs. When we look at all of these opportunities that continue to make us innovative and leaders in this work and provide experiences for students, those are all part of our general fund. Again, according to this structure, if the state of Michigan is assuming that all school districts are able to receive this fund, if this expires and we lose $33 million, the state of Michigan will not fill that gap in funding. So if you're kind of just thinking as a basic level, that's a cut of 16% across every program and service and staff within our district. So once again, we want to make sure that our community is informed of this non-homestead millage. This information can be found, easy-to-understand information on our website, PCCSK12.com. I want to encourage our community to visit this website. I will lift that we have historically gone out for this millage for 10 years. The state allows us to authorize up to 20 years. So we did make a decision as a school district, when this expires in 2024, to seek a 20-year renewal on this millage. Again, with the expectation that this is money that is needed to support our general operating fund. And so when we think about voter fatigue, we think about ballots and how confusing ballot language could be to really be fiscally responsible, plan forward, minimize the time that we're asking the community to go forward and vote. We made that decision to go forward for 20 years. Again, this is a renewal and not a tax rate increase. PCCSK12.com for more information. Yes.
So I know you're allowed to give factual information in this process, but me as a board member, as well as all the board members, can ask you to vote yes as part of this process. Monica can only provide the factual details around this. I think the case is very clear, and this is something that's very important for the community to vote yes on as part of this process.
Appreciate that, thank you. We're talking about our financial status, I think it's important to talk about the budget survey. When we keep with our commitment to our PCCS dynamic plan, which is our goal of really fostering transparency and being informed and engaging our relationship with our community. When we talk about our schools, we know that strong schools are the cornerstone of every good community. We want the voice of our community stakeholders, of our staff, of our students as we design our budget process for the 24-25 school year. We are releasing at this time, our annual budget survey. I am sure that trustee Keough will give me some more information about that survey throughout the course of his conversations this evening, but just wanted to share again that this is an important reminder for community members and district families to provide their input. This has already released, I believe, and the deadline to close is going to be Sunday, February the 25th, at 11:59 PM. Once again, this is allowing that input to provide some feedback as it relates to investments that we should make on behalf of our students and our district community for our general fund, as well as potential reductions that we may see as no longer priorities here in our school district.
I just want to make sure we're clear, is it Sunday the 25th or Friday the 23rd?
The survey, I have one note on here, it's.
Sunday is correct, yeah.
Okay, so just make sure that we can get all of our materials updated for that. So just for some context around this, this is our opportunity for you and the community to give us feedback on the things that you think that we should include in the budget process. The district takes this information and brings us forward to the full board, where we discuss these items and they go into what's called the transformation process. This is where the administration looks at all the different functions and activities that they do to take and identify what the priorities are for us as a district going forward. The board provides guidance and recommendations around the things that we think are important, and we very much value that community input into that process. And this is a great chance for you to do that. It can be things that you want to see additional investments in, but it could also be areas that you think that we should no longer be doing as part of the process to potentially save money for something else. And this is a great chance for you to provide that feedback in that process. We've generally had very good community participation with, you know, I think it was 83 responses last year, and we look forward to having even more responses this year.
Thank you very much. As I always love to take an opportunity to celebrate our staff and our students tonight, I want to lift up bird teacher Pamela Morgan. She was named VFW's Michigan K5 Teacher of the Year. We want to congratulate Ms. Morgan for this incredible accomplishment. She received the award for her work to teach citizenship and education topics and promote America's history, traditions, and institutions. As part of her nomination for this award, Ms. Morgan's annual field trip to the Plymouth Veterans Park was highlighted. The trip features a presentation about the park and veterans from all branches of service that talk with students. She is now in the running for the National VFW Teacher of the Year Honors, which will be presented later this year at a conference in Kentucky. Ms. Morgan's well-deserved honor continues our district's tradition of talented educators being recognized at the state and national level. Her work is yet another shining example of the talented and dedicated teachers who serve our students in our classrooms every day. Please join me in congratulating. Now on to our students, Plymouth DECA, the Plymouth DECA program earns national recognition. I want to congratulate our PCEP students, Emilio Herrero and Nolan McDowell, and Plymouth High School Marketing Teacher, Ms. Tyra Johnson. After their work with Plymouth School Store, the DIN was given Gold Level Certification by DECA. To be considered for the highest level of recognition, our students and their advisors were required to submit extensive documentation that explains how the DIN demonstrates the practice of various marketing and retail standards in marketing, finance, hospitality, and in management. The Plymouth High School Marketing Program and the DIN will be recognized for their work during DECA's International Career Development Conference that will take place this April in Anaheim, California. Once again, getting that word out, not just locally, but at the state level and nationally, that our students rock and they deserve to be recognized. And let's congratulate them. Continuing on with some student accolades, PCEP video students are winning a video contest. They have prizes there, so we want to salute a pair of our students in the video production class at PSEP who were recently named winners in the Suburban Collections Focus on the Road Video Public Service Announcement Contest. Salem students Mahdi Malay and Jacob Dullabout entered the contest by submitting a 45-second or less video designed to encourage young drivers to focus on the road. Jacob entry won the first prize, that was a $2,500 award, and Mahdi won $1,000 after claiming the third prize. Congratulations to our winners and to all the students under the direction of Janet Sutherland and the video production program who entered this contest. Again, we had a canceled meeting, but I am not going to hesitate to continue to amplify all of our students. So I'm going to continue going with some Canton students that, one was named the runner-up in an international writing contest. The writing talents of Canton High School junior Sophie Sumapow received international recognition recently when she was named runner-up in this year's New York Times International High School Memoir Writing Contest. Sophie submitted her memoir as a class assignment for Olivia Foster's 21st Century Global Issues Course. Her memoir was selected for recognition, listen to this, over 13,000 applicants worldwide. Congratulations to Sophie. Our students are definitely thriving. Finally, this week, I want to reflect on last week where we celebrated National School Counselors Week. We know the importance of our counselors and the work that they do on behalf of our students each and every day. So I definitely want to extend my heartfelt gratitude and appreciation for all of their work as we celebrated National School Counseling Week. And again, this is a week-long celebration, it focuses on public attention on the unique contributions of school counselors within the US school system. We are truly so fortunate for our champions, for our young people. And again, we want to thank them, not just on this week, but every single day for the work that they do. Finally, I will wrap up this evening, I think I'm wrapping up finally, with an invitation for the next Coffee with Monica. This will take place on February the 22nd, from 10:30 to 11:30 AM at the Plymouth District Library. We know that this is an hour-long gathering, we open our doors to our community members. This is really a chance for the district to receive the feedback on all of our programs and all of our operations. We try to answer questions. We go in back and forth in terms of our location, just getting community voice and feedback different times in the day. So I think our last. different times in the day, so I think our last coffee was in the evening at Miller. That was in Canton. Will be in Plymouth once again at the District Library, ten-thirty to eleven-thirty on February the twenty-second. So that concludes my report for this evening, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to brag on our incredible young people and our staff.
Fantastic. Great update. Thank you. Next up, Human Resource with Ms. Langford.
All right. Well, ask this. All right, good evening, and thank you for allowing us, because this is a team project here, the opportunity to come before you and highlight some of the great things that have happened in human resources in regard to recruitment and staffing over the last year, as well as some areas of improvement, and talk about kind of future planning. So I just want to start by saying, this presentation is around staffing, it's also around diversity, and we all know that diversity includes many facets. It's multi-dimensional. But what we're going to focus on tonight, just in case you're wondering why, is the area that we feel like we need most improvement, and that's the ethnic and racial dynamic of diversity when it compares to our student and staff demographic. We, as a district, do pretty well in diversity in other areas, those areas of education and various backgrounds, so just want you to know, we don't believe that this is all and we know that this is not all diversity is about, but I just wanted to give some explanation as to why we're focusing on that piece. With that, I just want to introduce staff that are here. We have Dr. Anglin, who's the Executive Director of Human Resources. We have Katie Illajek, who is the Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, and we have Colleen Sinkowitz, who is the Assistant Director in HR. Am I not in the right place? Oh, well, that might be a start. All right. All right, so tonight, we're going to focus on Human Resource Dynamic Plan Goals, student or Strategic Goal Plan A, which is that PCCS will increase achievement for all students and close the achievement gap, and Strategic Goal C, which is that PCCS will increase, enhance, and sustain community partnerships to improve student outcome. So as Ms. Langford mentioned, we all know how important diversity is when we're talking about staffing. Research shows that all of our students perform best when we've got diverse teachers, diverse staff in our building, so that they get diverse perspectives, diverse thoughts, diverse points of view presented to them. And then for our logic model, we moved this up in the presentation because it seemed to make more sense to kind of start with what is our problem statement? So again, we want to ensure that PCCS adequately fills open positions with a highly skilled, diverse staff, and increases our efforts to retain our current staff, because that's important as well. And we want to make sure that we're supporting staff absences and making sure our students are serviced to the maximum capacity. So when you look at our logic model, we look at some of the resources that we use to make these things happen, our open positions report, our daily sub-fill rates, we're on top of those every day so that we know where there are laxons, substitutes, and where we need to get people there. Our frontline A-SOP person moves staff around or subs around to make sure that positions are filled and that every student has a teacher before them in the classroom. And of course, some of our goals are, again, go back to our strategic goals, which is, which I already mentioned in the beginning. So under teaching and staff recruitment, some of the things that we've done this past year is that we've now twice hosted our own PCCS job fair, which I think I've reported out to the board previously. We found those job fairs to be pretty successful. We found them more successful than actually going to an MSU or EMU job fair, and so this year, I think we've kind of pulled back on doing all of those that we did previously because there is a cost associated with attending those, and then we're looking to do a spring job fair sometime in March or April. Again, every building has a premier sub. We're doing weekly new hire orientation, so you see it here. Every board meeting, we're hiring more people, so we're just trying to make sure that, again, our students have what they need to be successful here. And then the last bullet that I have there, oh, the one thing I did want to mention is in the spring last year, now time is going so fast, we participated in a multi-district job fair, which was a great idea. We did it with Northville, La Bona, Novi, and our district, and we had over two hundred people show up. I mean, it was back-to-back all day and it was a Saturday, so they plan on doing that again, so again, we'll participate in that. So finding things that we can do either in-house or with other districts seems to be kind of a change in the way that we normally recruit it, so I'm happy that that's occurring that way. New teacher recruitment, so some ongoing action plans, and I'm not going to touch on every bullet, but we do make sure that when we have those job postings that may be director level or above, that we're posting on many different national postings and boards so that we can have that exposure. Again, we're developing relationships and networks with many different associations that deal with diverse staff. Again, attending annual job fairs, we're collaborating with our building equity teams on hiring, and then again, that Grow Your Own program that we want to not use just for outreach to staff, but how can we also find out students who are interested in teaching careers and kind of start that pipeline going as well? Sorry, staff retention. You've probably heard me talk about our HR roadshow. It's kind of my baby in every district that I've been in, and I think that it is really successful, and I think that the staff enjoy it here. We go out every Friday to a different building. We now have HR T-shirts that we have, and we just really engage with the staff. They're able to come to us and share whatever, you know, concerns they have going on. Sometimes people just want to turn in something that they didn't want to come over here to have to do if they knew we were going to be in the building. We take little snacks out, you know, we kind of bribe them into coming to talk with us. We do a contest, we do a drawing so that they get some kind of PCCS swag, but it's really nice to get out and engage with the staff, and I think that that's very important, building those connections. The next bullet is something new that we've really just introduced, and Brittany in our department is heading this. I went to a conference and they talked about stay interviews. We talk about exit interviews all the time, you know, why are people leaving? Why don't we find out why people are staying? So Brittany has already started that process. She is meeting with people of all different, of all of our different union groups and non-union groups at different points in their career, so new hires, people who have been here for twenty years, whatever that looks like, and she's just compiling the data as to why they say they stay. She's going to go back out in like three more months and to those same people, do you still have those, you know, those same concerns? Is there, have they been addressed? What could we do to make you continue to stay? So I think getting that data will be very beneficial for us in some of our retention efforts. Everything on there, I think I talked about before, doing a staff appreciation, so getting back to a monthly HR newsletter. We were putting kind of a contest in every newsletter, and there would be a winner, and again, we would send them out some PCCS swag, which was a really nice touch, and people appreciated that.
Some of the things we're doing to our substitute recruiting efforts, we are still working with ADUSSAF to retain our substitutes, and at this time, we have four-hundred-and-ninety-five active substitute teachers that work for our school district. Our fill rates have increased this year. We're in the ninety-third percentile. Last year, we were in the ninety percentile, so we're happy about that. We have been recruiting some of our retired teachers to come back since ORS has changed the rules about retirees coming back to subs, so we've been probably hired four or five in the last month. Identifying some of our paras who are eligible to substitute teach, and then we are offering a premium long-term sub rate for anyone that's in a long-term position.
So some of our next steps is that we're going to continue to build some pipelines, and some of these may be things that I've mentioned. We need to really get out and increase our partnerships with universities and various groups who can help us with some of our recruitment efforts. We want to continue to have our annual diversity and sensitivity training to all staff so that all feel included and are comfortable working here. Again, job fair coming spring of twenty-four, and then again, just looking at additional Grow Your Own opportunities and programs. So twenty-three, twenty-four staffing goals, we're continuing to have to address some pretty unique challenges that won't be any surprise to any of you. We have a higher number of retirements and exits coming in, so sometimes we feel like we get all the positions filled or get them filled to a good point, and then we get a retirement, or we get a resignation. So if we could just get to that point. Again, the pool of applicants is shallow, and I hear that from administrators all the time, so we're, again, doing those job fairs onsite, I think, is very helpful for us to get people in that pool. And I reported this last year, and I just go out and look at the number every year. We're continuing to see that nationally, people are just not going into the field of education. Right now, they're down to twenty-one percent at the national level, and like I said, back in twenty-seventeen, they were at twenty-eight percent, so it's just gradually going down. And then when you look at staff of color going into the field in Michigan, the average is about eight percent, so just not a lot there. We continue to support increased staffing needs in special education. I think every district is going through that, and it's a tough place to be in, but we do ensure that our students are taken care of every day, regardless if the teacher is there. We get long-term subs, and we're really just trying to work through that process the best we can.
This is information on our current staffing totals. Our teachers and our professional school staff, eleven-hundred-and-fifty. That professional school staff includes not only teachers, but ancillary staff like social workers, school psychologists, counselors, occupational therapists, speech paths as well. School and district support staff, seven-hundred-and-six. That would be all of our paraprofessionals, administrative assistants, any of the support staff here at the board office in those positions. School administrators, we have sixty-four, and then our central leaders and our non-affiliated leaders, those would be like our core team executive directors, we have thirty-four, totaling one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty-four. And then this was our staff totals, new hires, so this was July first through January ninth. We had a very busy summer in the HR department. We hired seventy-one teachers and professional support staff, seventy-three school district support staff, five building administrators, and three central office and non-affiliated administrators, for a hundred-and-fifty-two people from July first to January ninth. It was a quite busy summer.
And a hundred of those people were hired during the summer, the months of July and August, so kudos to the HR team for getting all that work done.
Current openings, teachers and that professional school staff is twenty-three. Many of those positions are in our special education department, very hard to fill, school social workers, psychologists, and that is across the board, across the state, is, you know, hearing that issue. School district support staff, we have fifty openings. The majority of those openings are paraprofessional supervisory roles, like a lunchroom supervisor or in the morning bus duty and after-school bus duty. Two building administrators and three central office or non-affiliated positions for seventy-eight right now.
And I just wanted to mention on this slide, the teachers were down, I don't know if we were stable or down. Last year, this time, when we put this presentation together, we had thirty-nine openings for teachers and professional staff, so to me, that signifies that either people are, we're doing something better either on the retention side where we're having people want to stay, or our recruiting efforts are paying off, so I think that that's a good thing. And as Colleen stated, those fifty include lots of one-hour positions with the paraprof, so it's just hard to get those filled. And Dr. Anglin is working out a schedule that we are trying to get in place where those hours, where we could do it kind of an all-day shift as opposed to trying to hire someone for one hour a day. It's just hard to manage. So our race and ethnicity, as I spoke at the beginning of this, for new hires, to point out a few things, and I'll show you the data, but I just wanted to talk about some main points. The new hire data reflects definitely a more diverse staff by ethnic subgroup in comparison to the district overall, so we are working on getting a more diverse staff in here and showing some gains from that. The data shows definitely that there is an area of focus in the teaching category where we really need to continue to diversify by race and ethnicity, and then our support staff groups show definitely more in the range of diversity. So for the summer, as Colleen stated, from July first of last year to January ninth of this year, this is just a breakdown of our total staff hired, which was a hundred-and-fifty-two people, and this is just a breakdown of what that staff looked like by race and ethnicity.
This next section highlights the student and staff race and ethnicity data trends and key findings. Some of the highlighted points in this section include, overall, PCCS trend data has remained consistent over the past four years for most ethnic groups. In terms of students, the trend data reflects slight increases among Asian, African-American, Hispanic, and students represented in two or more race categories, and an increase in African-American hires among building leaders and central leaders, non-affiliated employees, as well as a slight increase in Asian paraprofessional hires is also reflected in the data. So the next couple of slides just kind of highlight those three categories. When you look at the student population trend by race and ethnicity, again, no significant changes, but what they're, you can see that there are slight increases over the past five years in the Asian and African-American categories, and also the two or more races. In terms of the staff population, as a department, we're constantly looking at ways to bring in diverse employees for all aspects of our district work, but we also want to really also zone in on those employees that we're hiring that have direct contact with our students, because we want, and we have the comparison between the student population and when you look at like teachers or paraprofessionals, we always want to make sure that we're recruiting with that in mind to ensure that the students see themselves reflected in the people that are in front of them.
So as we're looking at the data that Dr. Anglin just presented, we just want to look at how those staff compare proportionally to our students. So if we go to the next slide, you can see for each of these categories on the bottom are different race and ethnic groups. The green column in each section is our student population, and then it goes through teachers, school administrators, school support staff, and central leaders and non-affiliated, and just shows those proportions of staff that our students are seeing who look like them in terms of race and ethnicity in our schools. That is it. What questions do you have for us?
All right, we'll open it up to my right with Member West. Thank you.
No questions at this time. It's a great presentation. I want to look at this chart for a few more minutes.
I had a couple of things. One is, I really love the idea of the stay interviews, and I'm wondering if you could use testimonials or feedback from those processes in your recruiting activities, because it's much about why people, not just why they've chosen PCCS, but why they continue to stay, and that could be really helpful for you when you're out there competing with those other districts or things like that, you know? Those testimonials, you know, banner or something like that in those job fairs could be useful about why people have chosen and why they've stayed at PCCS. And, you know, people that see themselves as long-term careerists, so I think it's a great idea. The second was really on the special education. You know, we've struggled with this for a number of years. Do you see any path to make this better? What are our options to be able to address some of the shortcomings, the shortfalls that we have in the special education teams?
Well, I think the special education team, and my answer will probably be the same as it probably was around last year, but we do have various, and Beth can probably speak to this, some various associations and groups who offer some of those non-certified staff, the OTs, so we're pulling from those when we need assistance, but it's just, it's hard to get special ed staff. I think another tactic would be to see if, when we're looking at teacher negotiations, if there could be some additional offerings to the special ed staff for hiring, for those who stay here. Those are some other ideas that I have.
I was going to say, in addition, the state has a lens through the Talent Together program, recognizes not just a local issue, but a statewide issue, to look at really those Grow Your Own programs, so that if you have pararete educators or support staff that are interested in pursuing the profession, that have the opportunity to then work. We are a host district for Talent Together as a part of the state and have an opportunity to continue to remain in their jobs, receive their current benefits, while also going on a quicker path to certification to try to fill in those gaps.
I think those are good programs, and I'm excited to see as you go through the bargaining process if there's things that we could do to address that, because it's been a problem for a number of years, and I don't think we've hit upon what we need to do to address it, and they're some of our most vulnerable students. And I know that we're providing services through external firms and other things like that, but it's not always at the same level as what we'd be able to provide with our own team.
Thank you. I appreciate those questions, Trustee Kehoe. Love the proactive efforts and-
and congratulations on the increases that I saw in the charts. So you guys are doing some things really well. And so the question is, how do you make that grow faster? Right? And so what can we do? What do you need from us to help you grow faster?
Wow. I didn't anticipate that question. I was going to say, I didn't anticipate that question. You know, I don't know. Like, I think we've had a year and a half, or I've had a year and a half, to really see things that have worked and things that have not worked. As I mentioned, with those job fairs, we really got a lot of individuals in who were interested in those paraprofessional positions, which, as you saw, there's 50 or so of them out there. I think we definitely have to continue to increase the job fairs. Maybe we do them quarterly instead of twice a year to get some of those positions filled. I, Beth looks like she was going to jump in. Will you jump in, Beth?
Sorry.
Sure. I could also say that one of the things we're really doing is watching our paraprofessional cohorts and encouraging people who have some desire and interest and would fit really well as a teacher to help them grow. And so as we continue to, you know, scan all of the environment around us, communicating, collaborating with our community partners more. Secretary Sedu talked a little bit about what we saw at SPA, where we were talking about our educational careers pathway. You may remember last year, previously, we had one course in educational careers. We've created an educational careers pathway in our CTE program to also grow our own from our young people through, to get them in classrooms earlier, to get experiences, to show them how exciting and amazing education really is, and that it really is the greatest career in the face of the earth. So, of course, I'm a little biased about that.
Yeah, we've also looked at some of our student teachers that come in, that we hear from, buildings are good, our subs that come in. So a lot of those people, we've also hired in the process of just trying to get out there and recruit and retain.
Thank you. So if there's anything else you think about in terms of what can we do as a board to support these efforts, whether it's, you know, going to Lansing or talking about more funding and investments, let us know. In terms of the retention rate, if you could, and you don't have to do it right now if you don't have the numbers, but in board notes maybe, what's the retention rate for teachers that were hired in the last two to five years? So meaning, you know, they were hired three years ago, did they, how many of them stayed? And in terms of retaining teachers, if you could identify like one or two barriers to why teachers are leaving, and again, this can be in board notes if you don't have this information at the top of your head. But I'd like to understand, you know, one is, how many of our teachers are staying once they're hired? And two, if they are leaving, why? Is there some trend that you see? Thank you.
I think it'd probably be best to put that in board notes. I mean, I would say, looking at some of the exit data that we do have, there are various reasons. I couldn't pinpoint one exact reason why, you know, teachers leave. Sometimes it's pay. More often than not, it's really not pay, to be honest with you. Sometimes it's, you know, I don't feel included in this environment, and how can we make them feel more included? So various reasons. But yes, I will have someone get that information.
Yeah, that was one of my wonders in terms of how, once teachers are here, how do we make sure that they feel that they're part of the community, the classroom, the building? So, thank you.
Member McCord?
I just had concern, again, as I did last year, just the way, I know that there's a desire for diversity. And, but I also am concerned that we might not hire somebody who's very qualified because of trying to meet that need. Because right now, we're at a state, I think, in education that we really need to focus on getting kids educated and, you know, to just assume that because a teacher's a certain color might not be effective. It's kind of, I kind of think that's kind of racist.
So I'll give you the same response that I gave you last year, which was, we're going to hire the best candidate. If that best candidate happens to be diverse, then absolutely we're going to take that candidate first. But there is no desire to have someone who is not qualified before any of our students.
And I didn't mean it as close, but I just meant that, you know, as we classify all this and we group everybody into all these different categories, everybody within those categories are quite different. So to say, because of a skin color, that they're going to be effective culturally or whatever, doesn't always necessarily mean that, because that cultures also cross colors. And so I just, I just kind of think that it doesn't really help diversity by always classifying people that way. I think that diversity includes so many more things, and I just think that that's kind of destructive to some of our philosophy here. And I think that is possibly some of the reasons why people, just through some of the, and I haven't had, I'd love to see some of the person, the teacher development classes that are happening, because I've not heard some good things. And so that's just my concern. My concern is that we are all in one nation, one country, and have, should have the same goals and focus on those goals, to keep that country and to keep the, some of the things that are established there. And diversity is good, but I just think that too much focus on features and things is sometimes a little overdone, you know?
And as I stated, diversity is multi-dimensional. So tonight, I was just talking about one piece of it that is important and that we do need to improve upon.
No, I heard that, but I did hear color a lot. So I just, that always makes me question. So, thank you.
Member McCord?
Thank you. So my questions pretty much got asked before you got to me. I really did like the stay interview idea to find out, why do people stay here once they get here? Congratulations on the fill rate for the subs. That's fantastic, which means teachers are not losing a prep to watch somebody else's children, and it's a little more consistent for the kids, too. So that's great all around. I did have, can't read my own notes, and have less openings. And I did want to mention that I really liked this chart on page 23, where you had the students and then the teachers, because originally, when I was looking at this, the one on page 20, where it said the staff population trend by race and ethnicity, and then you had the line for students, it was very hard to read. So that was lovely. And I would like to say, as an educator, how important it is for students to see themselves reflected back by the people who are in front of them. I found that that's a really important thing, that children feel that they're being seen, and it does affect their educations. I was watching The Great Pottery Throwdown. I don't know if anybody watches that. It's a UK show. It's great. But one of, one of the women had made, they were making something for the garden, and she had some fairies, and she had made them reflective of her skin tone, and she said, growing up, she never saw anything that looked like her. So, you know, she was a fully adult woman. And so that's how it affects children in the classroom.
I appreciate that comment. I think it's most certainly important for individuals and students to see people who look like them, but I think it's equally important for other students to see students of different, different races and ethnicities as well, because it just prepares them for the world. This world is diverse, and so it just better prepares them.
All right, Josh?
So I have a possible suggestion, I would say. I don't, for lack of a better word. So I know we have the Kitty Campus and that sort of thing at the park. Have you gone to them and like told them, like, the openings that there are in the field, so that like it is a stable job? Like, that's just an idea that, like, you could go and have conversation with them? Because I don't know if that's something that they're hearing.
So I have not, and I appreciate that suggestion. We will write that down.
And then I had a question, but if you could go before I go, I can't remember.
I have no questions, but I liked your idea of collaborating with more universities.
Still can't remember, but thank you. It was an amazing slide. And thank you for all your work.
Yeah, so I'll just end with more of a comment. So really, you know, great work. Love seeing the progress on it. You know, I can tell you, I became the first president and CEO of the Boys and Girls Club Southeast of Michigan, nearly 100-year-old organization, and I became the first African-American to sit in that seat. One of the things that we notice is that, you know, kids now will openly say that they want to become president of a Boys and Girls Club, or of a nonprofit, or whatever the case is. And so I think representation is important for a couple of reasons. That's a real good touchy-feely moment for me personally, but I also look at industries like education, and with the shrinking pool, the, you know, the numbers that you showed, as far as less and less people going into education, one of the things I think we have to do is extend that pool, right? And I think having kids be able to see themselves as educators is a really important part of helping to encourage them to go into this field. So, you know, diversity, I think from that standpoint, there's a business case to be made for that, as far as being able to really grow the number of educators that we need in the future. So thank you for your hard work. I think it's really important. So, great presentation.
Thank you.
Before you go, I remembered my question. So, you were discussing how we are allowing teachers that we view as like great to go to special ed training. Are we helping, like, pay for that as well, or?
Talking Grow Your Own?
Yeah.
Yes. So that, the, we have many different Grow Your Own programs going on, but yes, that would be part of the Grow Your Own proposal, was to help them pay for those classes.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Anything else, Josh?
Nope.
You good? You sure? All right. Finance and Operations.
Thank you, President Wilson. This evening, first on our agenda, I appreciate this opportunity to bring forward for your consideration this evening, a purchase of six Combi ovens for Canton, Plymouth, and Salem High School kitchens. And as part of our ongoing commitment to enhancing services for students at PCEP, and in response to the growing participation across our high schools, the Nutrition Services Department is seeking approval for the acquisition of six Combi ovens, two for each high school kitchen. A Combi oven, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it is a combination oven and steamer. So it provides some additional flexibility. It provides an opportunity for our staff to deliver high-quality, innovative meals to a larger student and staff audience. It is a strategic investment. It allows us to replace the one oven that exists currently at Canton High School and Salem High School, and move those ovens proactively to our East Middle School and Pioneer Middle School. Both of those have experienced an increase in participation as well. So they will be able to benefit from those still operable and in good condition ovens. The Combi oven for the purchase at Plymouth High School, we replace a steamer and then thereby give them an additional oven as well. So the strategic investment aims to improve that food production efficiency as well. So to accommodate this request, we recommend engaging Stafford Smith for the project. They are a reputable retailer of food service equipment, given their prior experience installing our existing Combi ovens at certain locations. They've also offered to manage the relocation of those current ovens to the middle schools, and they have offered a comprehensive quote, which covers the cost of that equipment, the moving of the existing ovens, the delivery, and the installation, for a total purchase price of $157,123 for those six ovens. As well, we worked, we, I'm sorry, we, we took advantage of the Wayne Risa Consortium pricing program. It's a cooperatively bid program, COProPlus, that allows us to reap the benefits of a competitively bitted and awarded program for food service equipment, right here in our own county, along with partnership with the Michigan Association of Counties. The purchase was first presented at the Finance and Operations Committee meeting held on January 18th. So it was originally set for a first reading at the Board of Education meeting scheduled for January 23rd. However, that meeting was canceled, and so at Thursday's Finance and Operations Committee meeting on February 8th, we had requested for this to be a first and final reading for your consideration. At this meeting this evening, in order to allow time for that supply chain that we're still seeing some slowness, we want to be sure that we are allowing time to order and receive the equipment for an anticipated summertime installation. So, thank you.
Well, as this is a first and final reading, I'm looking for a motion for action item 240242.
Mr. President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution to purchase six Combi ovens for the PCEP kitchens. This is a first and final reading. It's action item 240242.
Is there a second?
Seconded. Second.
Member McCord seconded. All of, any other questions, Thomas? Go ahead.
I had one question. So we're installing the two ovens at Pioneer and East. What about the other middle schools? Do they have Combi ovens already, or will they be getting them?
I'm unable to answer that question. With us this evening is Gina Stanford with our Nutrition Services Department. May I ask you to entertain the question? Thank you.
Hello. So currently, the other middle schools do not have Combi ovens. It is something that we will be looking into, but the buildings that were in most need of extra ovens and capacity to cook food were the two that we selected. Okay, thank you.
And the other point that I would make is, I think you mentioned this, but I'm not sure, but this comes out of the Student Services, I'm sorry, Nutrition Services budget, so this is not from the general fund.
That's correct. In fact, we have excess fund balance in that fund that we do need to spend down, and this is a strategic use of that fund balance approved by the Department of Education.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Nope.
So I would just like to echo the importance of this, especially at Plymouth, Canton, and Salem, because they're really swamped, trying to produce the amount of food, especially with Michigan now giving everyone free lunches. The line is huge, and food is like hard to produce. So, yeah.
All right, Si, you got any?
I have a comment. So this year, Michigan's budget included meal, breakfast, lunch for all students, but it's not, and they did mention that they want to continue that forward, but I think it might maybe be a good idea to let our legislators know, legislators know that this program has been very successful and is increasing the amount of students who are taking part in that kind, those kind of meals, because I think those are the kinds of feedback they need to know, that it's actually a useful program that people appreciate.
Absolutely.
Oh, I have a question.
Sure.
So is there a way of evaluating, how many students are actually using this compared to not using it, or? In comparison to previous years? Yeah. Yes. We have lunch meal counts that we can report out every day. Could see what our counts are daily. And we have seen COVID-era counts when we were, you know, going through COVID. So yes, we can track and see. How many are, to evaluate, how successful and not. Okay. All right, thanks.
All right. Any further questions? I'm shocked a student would advocate for food.
Love it.
Food is really good.
That's right. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. All right, 6-0. Ms. Minnick, can you walk us through the next action item, since it's also a first and final reading?
Yes, thank you. It's my pleasure to bring forward for your consideration this evening, approval for a water main easement. This is for a bid PAC HS2A. It's concerning the band room addition. As part of that construction work with our 2020 bond program, we are very grateful to our community for their support of this bond program. It is allowing for the addition of a band room being built at Plymouth High School. And as part of that, it results in a need to request approval for the water main to be rerouted or to be built around the perimeter of that addition. So it is a request to grant the Charter Township of Canton a 12-foot easement for the purposes of constructing that water main. And so as a result, we bring that forward for your approval and review this evening. Thank you.
All right, is there a motion?
Mr. President, I move that we consider approval of a water main easement for bid PAC HS2A band room addition. This will be a first and final reading, and the action item is 240243.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Member Wester. Any questions?
Just a comment for this. This, the water main easement and the movement of this had always been considered as part of the band room addition, and so the costs were part of the, the part of the things that we previously approved. This is just providing the township the approval as part of that process.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. All right, Carrie, six zero. Onto action item 240244, consider approval of a resolution for the purchase of computers for CTE department. This is a final reading.
Mr. President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for the purchase of computers for the CTE department. It's a final reading, action item 240244.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, that was members to do. Any further discussion?
This was discussed at a previous board meeting and extensively in the FNO Subcommittee.
I have one question. I think when we talked about this before, we said that we wanted to, there was, might be some supply chain issues with it. Is that going to still be, is that going to be a problem now that we had to delay approval of this since the last meeting?
There won't be.
Mark Seltzer just said that we won't be, that we won't have any supply chain issues.
Okay.
Any further questions? All in favor, say yes.
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 Any opposed, say no. All right, Carrie, six zero. Also another final reading item, action item 240245, consider approval of a resolution for an ABM Industries Amendment to Contract.
Mr. President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for ABM Industries Amendment to Contract. This is a final reading and the action item is 240245.
Is there a second?
Second.
That was member Wester. Further discussion, questions?
This is for our custodial services and this has been discussed in the previous board meetings. Essentially, this is for the additional square footage that has been added to the district to support the additional custodials that are required to do that.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say yes.
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 Any opposed, say no. All right, passes six zero. Thank you, Ms. Minnick.
Thank you. If I may also thank the board for approval in the consent agenda this evening to continue service on the board with the MileF Plus as well as to have representation of this district on that board. Thank you.
Worth it, thank you.
All right, on to teaching and learning.
So tonight for your, for your consideration is a first read for a proposed name change. The PCEP Visual and Performing Arts, also known as the VAPA Committee and Department, proposed the name change of beginning to intermediate piano to change to piano studies. And the reason is to become more inclusive about the range of students' performance abilities entering the course. So we often have students who come into the course who may be advanced piano. This is an all-inclusive course that's very customized and individualized, excuse me, to the student level. So they're requesting the course just have a name change from beginning intermediate to a more inclusive piano studies course. And so I'll entertain any questions you might have, if you have any.
We'll start with the questions with our SVA students.
I have no questions, thank you.
I also have no questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Just a little bit of context, I think this was the meeting that you were not attending, correct?
Right.
As I recall, we were changing the name specifically because it was an inclusive study, that there were a lot of students that were wondering if it was the class for them.
Yep.
And so the name better, really better represents everybody.
Yep, we didn't want to have any unintentional exclusion of students based on a course name.
No questions for me.
Just like we do previously, is this going to be reflected on the course catalog with the old name and the new name?
Yes, but this one won't go into effect until next year as well.
Got it.
So, it would be the 2425 school year, which is really bizarre to say out loud. 2425 school year and beyond.
Okay.
Member McCarrick?
Oh, I have no questions, thank you.
I don't have any questions, but I, I like the range of courses that are being offered.
All right, moving on to another, wait, am I heard, final? This is a.
Final reading.
I lost myself, is this a final?
Yeah.
Yep, action item 240246, consider approval of a resolution for middle school health curriculum materials. This is the final reading.
I'll give member Kehoe a break. Mr. President, I move that we approve a resolution for middle school health curriculum materials, action item number 24-02-46, final reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
Member Wester, second. Discussion?
I have a question. So this, I just had concern because this, to, if, if this was just passed, it still costs the same as with the whole health program. I mean, we technically be buying the whole reproductive health and health, I mean, just basic health. So I just had concerns about that, that that's cost stays the same to purchase one part and not the other.
It's inclusive, yes.
It's inclusive, the whole thing.
The cost for reproductive health when it comes down here is inclusive.
It's included into that, okay.
Into the overall cost of the health material.
Okay. All right.
Other discussion? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
All right, five one. Action item 240247, consider approval of a resolution for high school health curriculum material.
Mr. President, I move that we approve a resolution for high school health curriculum materials, action item number 24-02-47, final reading.
Discussion?
Second.
I'm sorry, second. Kehoe, discussion?
This is the same thing, okay.
All right, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
All right, five one. Onto action item 240249, consider approval of a resolution for high school reproductive health curriculum materials.
Mr. President, I move that we approve.
I'm sorry, middle school comes first. Sean, I think you said high school reproductive materials.
I skipped one. Action item 240248, consider approval of a resolution, middle school reproductive health curriculum materials.
Mr. President, I move that we approve a resolution for middle school reproductive health curriculum materials, action item number 24-02-48, final reading.
Second.
And I have a comment for transparency. I was concerned about some of parts of this curriculum. One of the quotes says that in this class, it's important for us to respect these different aspects of sexuality. And it also said you might, you might not make the same choices and then it went on to say, but respecting these differences creates an atmosphere of acceptance and support that can help all people understand sexuality, take care of their bodies, communicate clearly and achieve good sexual health. Respect a variety, and it also said to respect a variety of viewpoints. There's inconsistencies, this is my, my comment, there is inconsistencies and confusion on what is to be respected, this is what I feel. Are students being told to respect a person or the choices the person is making? You can have and show respect for a person without respecting what they do, think or believe. Also, part of showing respect and concern for a person could also include expressing a disagreement if you think it's harmful to that person and it's also not respectful to lie to someone. Also, the word healthy in this context is very subjective, I believe, in some of this content. It is. Lesson, and then under lesson six, the reproductive system, it is, the, the teaching, the instruction presents a male body, instead of saying a male body, it says a body with a penis. And, and same with women, it's, it doesn't classify it as a woman or man. So this curriculum basically erases the categories of man and woman. It does not acknowledge brain differences, the, the biological brain difference of, of a man and woman which cannot be changed. And, and, I mean, would we consider this a male? I mean, if anybody with, I mean, what, is it human and could at least set human? And also, if you don't have any identification, what is anybody identifying with is what I'd like to know. It labels heterosexuals also as cisgender and fails to state that some people are offended by the use of that term. They consider themselves either male or female and not a category on a spectrum. Some people also do not agree that there is a spectrum that this curriculum does support. Also, I didn't like how it, oh, I was concerned, how it also promotes, like, part of the teaching isn't putting into groups, I think at middle school, some of the activities I didn't agree with, that some students would not be very comfortable and I know that a teacher could perceive that and perhaps not use those, those activities, but there was a lot of that and there was a lot of journal, journaling that put down your, you know, your feelings and things, that I would consider very personal information. So that was my concern, that was a few of my concerns with this. I won't go into because I want to take like 20 hours, so, but anyway, just wanted to comment on that, so, thank you.
All right, additional comment? Okay, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
Five one. Action item 240249, consider approval of a resolution for high school reproductive health curriculum materials, final reading.
Mr. President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for high school reproductive health curriculum materials. It is a final reading and the action item is 240249.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, comments?
I do have some comments. Anybody else want to go first or anything? Anybody, okay, I don't want to. Again, under this module six, under sexuality and gender, gender transition, it did not state any risks that's provided by doing this. We have found in today's society and some of the studies that there has been some negative effects that pertain to puberty blocking drugs and their effects on brain development and physical sex characteristics. Also, cross-sex hormones have health risks that are also not provided in here, but can also result in permanent sterility and it does not say anything about that. And also heart attacks, strokes, diabetes, cancers are also, also health risks. Also, it would be interesting to get another point of view so that the kids can actually critical think, would be to maybe have some de-transistors that could also provide information, people who've actually gone through that. It's very important information, which is starting to really come out now, that there's been enough time to see what the results of this is causing. And, and other points of views are not presented in this. The American College of Pediatrics has many articles and one particular is gender dysphoria and it talks about how, talks about all the problems with what children are going through and that there's not enough time for them to actually make a decision, nor is their brain developed enough to make some of these decisions. Well, I'll go real quick, but transphobia also it talked about there and it said, many people still don't understand that a person's biological traits and gender do not always match. Well, actually, many people do understand this, but they consider it unnatural and deviant. Some professionals still consider it a mental health issue and needs to be treated. Unfortunately, both sides of the issues are not represented in this curriculum, so it implies that if you don't agree, you don't understand yet. And so that's kind of offensive too, because it should have both sides. There's, there's a lot of medical groups that say one thing and that say another and it's pretty much biased, I believe, on this. And then one more thing, what I really had a problem with was, in, in internal and external influences, it said, but some cultures still believe in strict binary gender identity and traditional gender roles. In these cultures, anyone who does not follow the customary norms might be threatened. So first of all, that statement is offensive and stereot, it's a stereotype and subjective. Some cultures understand that there are only two sexes, your genders, your sex, and that's anyone's identity, that, and that anyone's identity does not change that fact. To make a negative generalization statement like challenges, it challenges their fixed beliefs and their rights to have them. It portrays that those who believe in traditional roles is, roles is dangerous. It fails to comment on the dangers and abuse that many kids suffer by those who promote this idea on that sex and gender are different, like this curriculum. I, I, I think that there's a lot of psychological techniques being used here that, I'm trying to find a term that I wrote down, sorry, I've been on this. I have studied, gone mostly through the whole thing. And the cognitive dissonance, it's making kids feel uncomfortable, it's making them hear these things, they have certain values, and it's putting them in a position where they're uncomfortable and at, at their age level, it's just not appropriate. And so I just think that, you know, gives the facts and, you know, a lot of this trying to, trying to say, well, this is the way it is, is really inappropriate, so I just wanted to share that.
All right.
And I also, one more thing, I just wanted to know that parents, this is, this is, parents can choose to do this or not. I do want to say that, right? They can look it over and they can decide to not be in this if they like so.
All right, any other comments? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
All right, that's five one. Action item 240250, consider approval of a resolution for a high school social study elective course, History of Hip Hop and Rap. This is the final reading.
Mr. President, I move that we approve a resolution for a new high school social studies elective course proposal, History of Hip Hop and Rap, action item number 24-02-50, final reading.
Second.
All right, any questions?
Anybody else have a comment? I don't want to like, you're the only talker. Okay, so I had concerns about the content in this class and understand that it said age appropriate, but however, age appropriate is very subjected, subjective. I also have looked at resources available to be used that I have before and I stated in the past that I considered them to be biased and limited, I, which doesn't allow for real critical thinking. I've looked at our current courses and noticed that we already have a tremendous amount of elective courses available to the students and I've also compared them with other districts. Churchill has a Law and Justice, the Constitution at Work, Cranbrook has Rise of Nazism and the Holocaust and they have some other more in-depth type studies. I know that, that it was not required to add any more cost to this, except that I, I do consider a teacher's time a valuable resource and a cost, which could be used to provide additional help to struggling students and, or perhaps offering an additional section to classes that we already have. I understand this is an elective, but I leave it, I believe it would be better suitable as like a community class. I also noticed that there wasn't a class for the history of Native Americans, which was an issue we just had. And since we are now participating in the Grow Your Own program, I personally believe a class on the history of education and how other philosophies such as socialist Marxists have influenced that and how it affects our country and I think that would be a very valuable resource, so, thank you.
Other questions, comments?
Just comment.
Go ahead, please.
Since it was, we went through SPA, I had a lot of positive comments from the community and students, so I want to appreciate people that were involved with this work. It, it is opening up opportunities for our students and staff to look at, again, diverse perspectives, diverse music. I think it's critical for us to make sure that we have content and courses that kids feel excited about and this was one of the courses that seemed like kids were really excited about.
And I'm not part of the SPA committee, but I've heard people that have heard about this course from the past board meeting and other things and there's a tremendous amount of excitement about this program. Some of the students that I've heard from is they were disappointed because they're seniors this year and they're no good a chance to take this class. So I think there's a great community groundswell for this.
Yes, there is, we, we reviewed this extensively in SPA and it does provide a great deal of, of opportunities for research, for discussion, for writing opportunities and the teacher and the people, the, the staff that were putting this course together came and talked and I think that everyone that was in the SPA committee that day, including the people that were in the audience, asked if this could be presented as a community ed course in addition to a high school course, because they were so excited about learning about it, so.
Wow, that's great feedback.
So, I think it's important for us to support the staff and teachers who bring these forward, because that's how new courses are added. So if we are supporting these people, then somebody might hear like something that you have said and thought to themselves, I would really like to teach a course like that. And if we're supporting this kind of innovation, then the teachers will feel comfortable enough to come to Miss Rail or to their building level leaders and say, hey, have we thought about doing this, this other course? Because it's a lot of work.
Fantastic.
I'd like to just say one thing, I think when you look at what we already offer in our, our class course selection and you compare that to other districts, we do already have quite a bit and I think if we want to be equitable, you know, there's other things, maybe Native American or some other areas that we could touch on that are not represented there.
So you're saying we're over indexing and?
I think we have a lot. I think we have a lot of classes, and I think of finances and things like that, that I think that was, I mean, we seem to be very efficient on, um, uncovering a lot of history that.
Are you saying specifically, like, African-American, uh, courses?
I'm just saying, if, if we're, well, I'm saying, if we're going to add courses, you know, maybe there's some other types of courses that are being ignored that could be added, but I don't really, I'm, when I look and compare to the other schools, um, we are, we have a lot, and maybe, maybe the thing is, and I don't know, because I haven't, I don't know how many times things are offered, like military history, how many sections are offered in each of these classes. Perhaps maybe just offering more sections of certain classes might be an answer to some of the things. I mean, kids, I mean, I know kids will enjoy it, but is it, is it a class that is going to really, I mean, I don't know, I'm, I'm just trying to say, it's, it's, there's certain things that we need to make sure that kids have before they leave the, the school, and just want to make sure that those things aren't going to be overstep.
So, Ms. Rail, what, what are the things that the kids will receive in this course that prepares them when they leave school?
Yep, so, um, not only is it aligned to the social studies standards, but it's also cross, crosswalked with, as, uh, member Wester talked about, there's a lot of research skills in this class, information and digital literacy, um, a good amount of, uh, research writing, uh, understanding how to do good quality research, and also looking across a global perspective, not just a national perspective, about, um, different cultures and how, um, music has actually engaged socially to move, um, social reforms forward. So, there's a lot of really intentional work behind this course around, it's, it's not just about listening to hip-hop music and rap music, it's really about understanding how music influences cultures, moves cultures forward, bring cultures together, and so, um, as we look at all of the new courses, which were actually very much nationally lauded for and locally lauded for the, the diversity of courses we have, the amount of courses we have, and also an understanding that elective courses only run if students are interested in them. So, it, we don't offer a section and then, you know, if no students are there, we wouldn't run that section. So, it doesn't take away any staffing or courses from anyone else. Um, it goes into the course catalog, students sign up for the courses that they're interested in, if there's enough interest in the course, it runs, if there's enough interest in multiple sections, then we implement multiple sections, so. There's a lot of intentionality behind what we do, and again, as students work with their families to determine what courses that they want to take, so.
I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, as member Picard pointed out, when you look across districts, we lead the way, so congratulations on offering these type of courses.
I didn't mean that, I just meant we have a lot of classes.
All in favor say yes?
Yes.
All in favor say no?
No.
All right, passes five to one. All right, consider approval, oh, sorry, my computer is freezing. Are we on a?
High School Visual and Performing Arts.
Fifty-one, yep, all right. That's what I get for going digital instead of old school on my paper like I normally do, trying to be fancy. Action item twenty-four oh-two fifty-one, consider approval of resolution for a high school visual and performing arts course name change, uh, Parksman to Bravo, final reading.
Mr. President, I move that we approve a resolution for high school visual and performing arts course name change, Parksman to Bravo, action item number twenty-four dash zero-two dash fifty-one, final reading.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, conversation?
Again, we went through SPA, a lot of conversations, if you want to talk about.
So, yeah, the, as I recall, this, uh, this, we discussed this, what, now, month? Six weeks ago?
It's been a while.
So, the, the intent of changing the name of the course is because over time, it has evolved from, more into a course that is based on, and not being a music person, I'm going to get it wrong.
I probably will, too, but I also, we also have Kathy Williams here, swooping and save me if need be. Um, it is about the vocal range of the, the voice range, not about anything to do with any other aspect of the student, so it's really about, um, looking to be more inclusive in the name of the course. It also corresponds and cross collaborates with the, another course that we run called Encore, so it, it has some connotations with the Bravo when Encore is the music pieces.
So, this is just a name change of it, I think the only costs were purchasing a T-shirt, which would have been done every year anyway.
Yep.
All right. All right, additional comments, questions?
Um, I do.
Yep.
Um, I just am concerned that, you know, traditionally, groups have been with Parksman, men sing tenor, men sing, um, baritone, men sing bass. I know women are capable of that, I'm a second alto, I could be in a contra alto, um, but there is definitely a difference, there's a vocal chord difference, there's differences in it, and, um, it's unfair for males to play on women's sports teams, I think it's unfair for women to take those positions, and men, I think, for centuries, there's been, um, men's chorus, women's choruses, and once you start mixing up, we now have another mixed chorus. Um, I think that, um, it also takes opportunities away from some of the men that have those ranges that might take away some of their solo opportunities. Um, we are, we are also reducing the options available to our students, instead of allowing them to select either a sex-specific group or mixed chorus, we are now reducing the diversity within our music program and forcing all groups to be mixed. So, I just wanted to share that.
So, so.
I have a clarifying, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Clarifying question, Ms. Rail, you had talked about this, it was before a mixed group, right?
Yeah, this, this course is inclusive of, of, it is not excluded, exclusive of gender.
Right.
Um, this course is, has, has, for the past many, many years, been, you know, inclusive of vocal range, so we have, um, all genders in the course now, so.
Will there be, uh, young men excluded now because of the name change?
No, so, the, um, the course is, uh, the course runs with the students who are eligible based on their range for the course, and so.
And Encore is, is the equivalent for the lower, for the higher ranges, correct? Did I get that right?
Correct. So, so, women are singing tenors.
So, it's purely a name change, to better represent the, to better represent the, the skills that are in, that are involved in that class.
Got you. All right, any other conversations?
So, two things, one, um, I see it says Parksman to Bravo, where it's like telling you the old name and then to the new name, um, and above, it did not, like, in parentheses, like, state the new, oh, for the, oh, nevermind, it did. It's been a long day. But, uh, secondly, I would like to echo your words, um, I have been in several different choirs throughout my life, right now, I'm in Aria, which is at PCEP, and there are some extraordinary women who can sing really low, so, and they are in Parksman, so, are currently, so it's not gender-excluded, the name was just kind of keep, like, putting up a barrier from women to join even with that low range, and then, due to their low range, they might not be able to join Encore, so it's kind of like allowing them to find their home in a choir.
And Encore is mixed gender as well, right?
Got you. All right, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed say no?
No.
All right, five to one.
Second to none.
All right, Student Services, and I believe, uh, Superintendent Meredith's pitch-hitting for.
Yes, this evening, we are bringing as a final read, a resolution for your approval for the school district to continue moving forward with our enrollment of non-resident students for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. This will be pursuant to our Schools of Choice Program, Section one-oh-five and one-oh-five C. When we look at the resolution that is before you, we have asked that we continue with a maximum number of five hundred seats for this program. When, we would all advertise, it would be for a minimum of one seat for kindergarten through the tenth grade year. This has been considered as a first reading at our last meeting, and we are asking for you to consider your approval for this, this evening.
And is there a motion?
Mr. President, I move that we approve of a resolution for the enrollment of non-resident applicants for the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year pursuant to Schools of Choice, Section one-oh-five and one-oh-five C. This is a final reading and the action item is twenty-four oh-two fifty-two.
Second, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Give it to McCoyn, give it to McCoyn.
Okay.
All right, discussion?
Um, I had concerns, um, with all the different financial changes coming up and that we're trying to maneuver through, um, I'm concerned as we add more out-of-district kids into our, I mean, we have a lot already, and if, as we add more each year, it becomes to be where it's the district priorities from what our district may, may want, um, is a, is a consideration, plus, you know, if we in the future want to have bonds passed, you know, as we become more, and with more other community people coming in, and, and will tax supporters support, support schools that are starting to have, um, other districts involved, and will, because they would not be supporting money to improve the schools, um, and just the, um, competition within the schools of, as you have more people, like, just like sports, everything, you know, just that those places would be taken, like, if you have, um, people who move here for some of the special, um, things that, that we have, um, then may, may not have opportunities that may be taken, so, that's just a concern, that's just, I don't know, how does that, I mean, because once, when somebody comes in from another community, they're here to, sorry, excuse my voice, they're here for the whole.
Till they graduate.
Till they graduate, yeah, so.
So, when we look at our philosophy behind a Schools of Choice program, um, historically, we are losing or graduating between fourteen hundred to fifteen hundred seniors, and then our kindergarten class comes in at approximately one thousand to eleven hundred students, and we're looking at a birth weight, so less students being born now than were born with the senior year that's going out. When we look at our Schools of Choice, it gives us that ability to, we still have to have the classroom that's there, so if we have twenty-one students in the classroom, there's already a teacher, we have the ability to offer these open seats to our, us, non-resident students, um, and, uh, to your point, they then become our students for the remainder of the time that they are here. In terms of our students, our Schools of Choice program, they don't have an ability to choose a school, so as you speak to, uh, competition, they don't have an ability, they are choosing the district, and so we make sure at the same time, we run a concurrent program, our window, to offer intra-district choice, so if there may be students within the community that would like to take a look at another school, they have that ability to apply for an open seat, and again, Schools of Choice are choosing the district. We have been participating in this program, I believe we started in two thousand and eleven, we started with fifty students, and, um, continuing again, I think the biggest, um, when we think about our philosophical reason, as we talked about these educational opportunities that we are providing for students, our funding comes in order to provide these for our resident students, for the number of students that are over here, that's our, uh, our, how we receive our state aid, so we want to be able to continue to provide these opportunities for students and, um, opening our, uh, borders to, through one-oh-five and one-oh-five C, and again, those are students that are within the county of Wayne County, as well as the counties that touch Wayne County, is the program that we're involved in. So, it is a limited Schools of Choice program, not a rolling program with the idea that we are, um, opening those seats when we're going to run a class and, uh, fill those open seats.
Okay, so, I guess I, from, coming from Avonia, I saw how we kind of, our enrollment went down, and then we eventually, to be accountable, we had to kind of condense things, and, and then, um, you know, certain quote, like, you would condense, move kids to different places to accommodate where there's classes, openings within our district, and then we could see a, a better idea of, like, well, do we still need a school? Do we need this extra school to have to, to, um, support and fund? So, I'm, I'm concerned about, as we add, you know, each year, we add more and more out-of-district, what's our district looking like, and will we, um, will we be accountable to, like, having, like, maybe eventually, well, this building really doesn't need to be open, you know, I mean, that's what my concern is the.
We definitely do projections for our, our students, and in the past, we've had to, based on the number of law, students lost, we've had to close schools in the past. Uh, we are currently, as we're looking at the students across, for example, our fourteen elementary schools, it's not enough that we would have to close a school, but again, it would allow us then to continue, so we wouldn't, if we didn't participate in this program at the elementary level, for example, we wouldn't be at a place that we would close schools, but this allows us to continue to maintain the program offerings that we have.
So, to add on to that, if we were able to fill up those seats in a particular classroom at a school level, it allows us to keep that school operational and functional. If we end up having to close schools, and those have really negative impacts on the communities and the neighborhoods where those schools exist, and we've, we've had to close schools in the past, um, you had a major boom in the, in the seventies and eighties, uh, here, and we had to close schools, and that was really hard for the communities when we had to do this. This is an opportunity for us to be fiscally, fiscally responsible by maximizing the, uh, the revenue that we get from the state by having our classes be at the appropriate size, instead of having classes be underutilized, and bringing that extra money in that helps support the initiatives and the programs that we have across the district, and avoid closing neighborhood schools. I mean, I, I think, you know, encouraging us to, 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 to start closing neighborhood schools is, I think, a terrible idea.
Well, it, it creates a hardship for the parents, right?
And the community and the neighborhood.
And the community as a whole, so, no, all right, any other discussion, comments? All right, good discussion, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed say no?
No.
All right, five to one. See up the last one, action item twenty-four oh-two five-three.
Final resolution for your consideration is the, um, consideration to approve the enrollment of non-resident students for our PCCS employees, uh, for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, and again, each year, the board has to decide whether or not we're going to participate in a program, uh, for Schools of Choice. These are for our employees that do not live within PCCS but have, uh, chosen to bring their students forward, uh, to attend school in our district. This was reviewed as a first read at our last meeting, and we're asking for your consideration as a final read this evening.
All right, discussion? I'm sorry.
Mr. President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for the enrollment of non-resident students for PCCS employees for the twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-two, twenty-five school year, final reading, action item twenty-four oh-two fifty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, that was Wester. Uh, discussion? All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed say no? All right, six to zero. All right, thank you, Mr. Tiskowitz, uh, to a citizen's comment, I believe we have one citizen's comment this evening, and that is Lisa. Cap, Capit?
Capatina.
Capatina.
Yes. Good evening, some of you might recall, I attended a recent school board meeting to inquire about the school meal, meal plan. After that meeting, Josh Patterson was kind enough to extend an invitation to me to join the meeting, where they were going to meet with the, um, nutrition coordinator. I attended as a guest a couple weeks ago, and when I listened to the students in the room, I was truly impressed by their decorum, their active engagement, and their problem-solving solutions. That was an awesome meeting, Josh, and I want to thank you for actually inviting the old lady that comes and sits into the meeting. It was when, however, I listened to the food and nutrition coordinator explain the metrics that she uses to determine what the meal offerings are, is when I was disheartened. As a parent and a former health professional, honestly, I was embarrassed for them, and I'm being very honest. The metrics used to feed our children are, and this is verbatim, and in order, what is popular and a good seller, vendor-supplier accessibility or limitations, cost and labor. Nutrition was not mentioned, but when I challenged on that point, the response was, "We follow USDA meal pattern guidelines, and our donuts are the healthiest you can eat, and the Cheetos sprinkled on mac and cheese are low-fat." When a school board member, as a liaison, reveled in this as a talking point to share with our parents, I was very frustrated, because so many things about the reality of that conversation were missed. It was not my meeting, it was theirs, so I am coming before you with the conversation and responsibility back. Some facts, food choices impact our health, our brain, and our overall function. Fact, food can be medicine, and that food is usually not found in a box, but the groups that are providing our student meals, the food vendors, suppliers, and meal pattern guidelines are including many hyper-palatable offerings, which means foods that contain a mix of ingredients to make a food palatable, that enhances consumption and also becomes addictive. to make a food palatable, that enhances consumption, and also becomes addictive. These are processed foods or sweets with alluring combinations of fat, sugar, carbohydrates, and sodium. They also include artificial ingredients, and these lead to chronic metabolic disease. Our donuts are the healthiest you can eat, and cheetos are low-fat. Fact, they're still made with artificial yellow dyes, added sugar, and other chemical additives. Why not offer them no donuts, but mac and cheese with carrots? And many other healthy options that they were in fact asking about, strawberries for one, um, more salad options. It's a fact that consuming lots of sugar may put one at risk of developing not only diabetes and high blood pressure, but also mental disorders like depression. So when we hear about child obesity and the pandemic of mental health affecting our youth, perhaps the schools need to look also at what we are providing them with the one-hundred-and-sixty million dollars in our education budget for free meals this year. Food does impact the overall health and well-being of our students.
And I, I apologize, we are at time, yeah, thank you for your, your, uh, comments, and just as a reminder, anytime there's a citizen comment, uh, Dr. Merritt will follow up directly, um, so I know Dr. Merritt will be following up with you directly to address your, your concerns. Thank you so much for taking time to first, uh, go to the SVA meeting, and also see what the, our youth, our students are doing, but then also taking the time to come back and, uh, speak to the board.
All of our students in that room really behaved so well, professional, and it wasn't high schoolers, it was a mix of middle school and high schoolers, that was one of the biggest things.
Thank you, thank you for that. All right, um, discussion, MASB Board of Directors election, ask Dr. Merritt to.
Just, uh, wanted to, again, bring to your awareness, this information was in board notes. Um, it's that time of year to consider the elections for the twenty-two, twenty-four MASB Board of Directors for PCCS. You are again Region Eight. Diane Robertson, she has received your ballots, and the candidates that are up for a three-year term to represent your region are Melody Hind, she's Wayne Westonland Community Schools, Burget McQuinston, Lake Orion Schools, and Evelyn Pridemore. You received a candidate booklet with background information about each of these candidates, so I wanna just encourage you over the next couple of weeks to review that candidate information. We will have this discussion at the next meeting, February the twenty-seventh. You, as a collective voice, would advocate then for one name to move forward on the ballot that Diane would submit for your name after that meeting in terms of representation for PCCS. So again, just want to encourage you to review that background information. At our next meeting on the twenty-seventh, this will be an item for your consideration to vote on a name to move forward for PCCS, and we would, uh, Diane would submit the ballot on your behalf.
Does any board member have any questions about the process? All right, thank you, Dr. Merritt, follow-up board questions?
So, just on the subject of discussion for a second, um, we had talked about at FNO about a follow-up on the athletics and, um, activities survey that we wanted to do. I'm sorry, we had followed up with the FNO meeting about the athletics and activities, uh, survey that we wanted to do, and that was gonna be something we were gonna look to get on the agenda. Sean, I don't know if, uh, if Lauren conveyed that, and if we've had that discussion yet, or?
So, um, uh, Member Christensen did reach out.
Okay.
And, uh, where we left it is, we're gonna follow up with you, um, direct, and Dr. Merritt, to, to, uh, have a discussion.
Okay, great.
Yeah, last, last, we discussed ultimately, you know, it was sent to FNO, and, and so it sounds like you're looking for some additional clarity.
Yeah, I think that there was some confusion on whether, and my understanding was it was sent to FNO, but there was some confusion on the alignment of what needed to happen.
Gotcha.
So I'm happy to collaborate and participate in trying to either have that discussion or get that alignment, but I'd, I'd like to move this, this process forward.
Okay, so we'll reach out, schedule something ASAP with you.
Thank you so much.
When's the next FNO meeting?
Every other Thursday, so it is, uh, our next FNO meeting is on the twenty-second.
So, so we'll commit to have that, that conversation before then.
Okay, perfect, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Sorry.
Nope, no, good, good, good follow-up.
Can I ask a, another question?
Please.
In terms of, we had talked about the last meeting, some sessions, community sessions, uh, giving a factual information about the upcoming military renewal, do you have a date, has that already happened?
So it has not happened, we've had some scheduling challenges, um, in being able to, to, to do that information and to, to set up that, that webinar, so.
So, they did make a cute video.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we've recorded some videos, and we've been participating in that process, um, you know, the, what we, what we decided at the last FNO meeting was that our focus would be on factual information, because, uh, you know, here in the boardroom and out in the public, we can advocate as board members to say yes, but if we're using any district resources as part of the process, like doing a webinar, it has to be that factual information. So we participated in those, um, in the, the video and the promotional information, or, I'm sorry, the educational information about the process, um, but, you know, it was hard for us to do a, um, promotional, or we could not do a promotional activity that was independent of that. So we have taken some time to do some promotion on social media that is independent as board members as part of that process to make sure that that message gets out and the importance of voting yes for this process.
And then the videos can be found on the website that you talked about earlier, great.
Yeah.
Question, um, I just wanted to ask a question about the student technology acceptable use and safety. First of all, I wanted to say, great policy, coming from an IT field. Um, but then the question I had is, has that been reviewed by, like, the technology teachers? I know there was.
I believe so, Mr. Selsner, of course, is left, um, but he reaches out pretty much to everybody.
Okay. Okay.
And the community, he had some, uh, he's been working around the state with IT leaders, um, business people, I mean, it's really, like, he's trying to get input from various entities.
Good, because I know there was concern on the heart of the teachers, because there was a lot of unclarity before.
Right.
And.
This is, this came, this came back, we deferred that policy and brought it back around because of some of those initial concerns.
And it's still very, it's still, it's such a fluid field right now.
Oh, I know.
That, he, he does anticipate that in the future, this is gonna have to be.
Revised before our next cycle.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This won't be like ten or fifteen years before we look at it.
Yeah, but it is important that the technology teachers are able to discuss it and, and leverage the software that's there so that they can prepare the students for what's coming.
Yes.
So, okay, thank you.
All right, Dr. Merritt, can you walk us through follow-up board questions?
With the follow-up board questions, over the span of, I think, the last probably six weeks, I believe that we've addressed all of the asks. If there is any additional questions, or if you believe I'm missing something, please let me know, but I think that you've received all of this information through board notes. This evening, I've captured two follow-up questions, the retention rate for teachers, um, for the last, uh, three years, and also, two to five years? Oh, I missed the average. Two to five years, and, um, what are the one or two barriers or barriers that teachers are reporting as to why they're leaving?
And is there any way of, of seeing some of the professional development, some of the classes or things that they have taken, or viewing some of that, or, or not?
So, like, some of professional development classes that, that have been. For our teachers?
For teachers in that.
Like our professional development catalogs?
Yeah.
So you just wanna see our professional development.
I think we, yeah, I think you supplied that in the past.
You can get that again. Right?
All right, uh, so with that, actually, I'm gonna end it with, um, my appreciation to, to the board, um, since it's, uh, Board of Education Appreciation Month, late, a little late, but, um, I don't have a certificate, but just some kind words, you know, I, I know that this requires a lot of, uh, work. Um, it's really a, a second full-time job, you know, when it's all said and done, and, um, you know, it's, it's, uh, it's, it's tough work, but when you see our students thriving, you know, uh, because we were able to start the first ever SVA meeting, and then we have a community member come up and, and, uh, you know, share the exact same sentiments that, you know, sitting in on that meeting and seeing how professional the kids were, seeing how engaged, seeing how inquisitive they were, you know, that, those are moments that, that make this worth it, so, you know, once again, I, I appreciate the community member for speaking, and then also really appreciate Josh and Said, the hard work that you guys have put, put in to, uh, to start this, uh, SVA, and, uh, you know, really make the, the district proud, so, thank you as junior board members, and, uh, you know, thank you to my colleagues for, for all of your hard work.
And then I'll speak to, for both of us, is we greatly appreciate all the support that you guys have given us through this process as well.
Fantastic, and thank you, Dr. Merritt, so. With that, we will adjourn the meeting at nine oh-five PM, thank you, everyone.